Good evening. Welcome to the Oceanside Planning Commission meeting for March 13th. If I could get everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Dodds, would you lead us? Thank you. City Planner, would you please do the roll call?
Chairman Rosales.
President.
Vice Chair Morrissey.
President.
Commissioner Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Custer.
Here.
Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
Commissioner Simons.
Here.
And Commissioner Malik.
Present.
Let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present. We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. We'll go to communications on matters not on the agenda. Do we have any slips from the audience this evening?
Commissioner Rosales, no, we do not at this time.
Great, thank you. So we'll move to approval minutes from our last meeting. It's been a while. Boy, it's been that long, two months? January 23rd minutes. Any discussion? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Custer made a motion to approve minutes as is.
A second.
Second. Commissioner Dodds. Any further discussion? None seen, so please vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We do not have anything listed on tonight's consent calendar on the agenda. Nothing under transportation items, so we will move to public hearings. We have one item agendized tonight, and that is consideration of a development plan, a regular coastal permit, and a request for density bonus at 1931 through 1933 South Tremont Street. The applicant is JLHFXS Tremont LLC. I'll start with disclosures, staff report. I don't recall getting emails, but I'm very familiar with the site, not too far from where I live and drive by all the time. Vice Chair Morrissey.
I'm familiar with the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Dodds.
I'm familiar with the site and went by the site and read the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Balma.
I also did the same. I had the staff report and drove by the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Simons.
Staff report and drove by the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Malik.
Read the staff report. I've driven by the site. I've walked the site. Very familiar with the area.
Thank you. And Commissioner Custer.
Drove by the site, read the report, and looked at the project website.
Delaney Carmen is our presenter for staff this evening. Good evening, Delaney.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Delaney Carmen with the Planning Division, and I'm here to present Agenda Item Number Four, Development Plan D-2210. The applicant is requesting a development plan, regular coastal permit, and density bonus for the demolition of two single-family homes and a triplex, and the construction of a three-story, 17-unit apartment complex located at 1931 to 1933 South Tremont. The site is located in the South Oceanside Planning Area and the non-applicable jurisdiction of local coastal program. The project site is designated Coastal Residential High Density by the city's general plan and Medium Density Residential by the city's zoning ordinance. The site is bordered by a mix of single-family and multifamily residences in all directions. The proposed apartment project includes 16 market rate units and one very low-income affordable unit. As designed, the three-story building would have apartments located on all three levels, with the ground level also containing covered and uncovered parking stalls, as well as common open area and private storage spaces. The units would range in size from 470 square feet to 897 square feet, in a variety of studio, one- and two-bedroom floor plans, with all private open space areas being provided in the form of patios or decks. The style of the proposed project embraces the coastal setting of South Oceanside with brightly colored plaster walls, natural ventilation and light through floor-to-ceiling windows, and a highlight of usable outdoor patios and lush landscaping. A cubist approach to varying the mass and open space creates outdoor terraces that dot the facade like a checkerboard, in addition to a wedding cake-style tiering that reduces the bulk and massing of the building. Common patio areas and an abundance of landscaping on the property frontage help to create a pedestrian-friendly social engagement with the neighborhood. In exchange for reserving 5% or one very low-income unit, the project is allowed a 20% density bonus that would provide three additional units above the maximum allowed for a total of 17 units. The affordable unit will be proportional to other market rate units provided and will be allocated as affordable to very low-income households per state density bonus law.
Excuse me.
Sure.
Could you please slow down a little bit and speak up?
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you very much.
By providing five very low-income units, this project is entitled to one concession, which is a request to eliminate requirements for undergrounding all overhead utilities along the project frontage. In order to accommodate the increased density allowed under density bonus law, the project cannot physically comply with all of the development standards required for non-density bonus projects. The applicant has requested waivers from the following two development standards pursuant to state density bonus law: a covered parking requirement and the outdoor storage space As detailed in the staff report, staff has evaluated the project and finds it consistent with the general plan, zoning ordinance, and local coastal program. The project's proposed density is consistent with the surrounding multifamily residential land use designation, and the incorporation of local coastal architectural style would integrate the project into the surrounding neighborhood and improve the existing site by providing updated housing and landscaping. The project complies with development standards of the R3 zoning district with the exception of the two requested waivers, and there will be no impact to public coastal access and no removal of parking. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission confirms issuance of a Class III categorical exemption per sequel Article 19, Section 15332 in filled development projects, and approved Development Plan D-2210, Regular Coastal Permit RSC-228, and Density Bonus DB-2206 by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023-P05, with findings and conditions of approval attached herein. This concludes staff's presentation. Both the applicant and staff will be available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Delaney. If you could stay there for a second. And Commissioners, if you want to chime in, use your button to let me know that you want to address either Delaney or the applicant. Delaney, I thought I saw in the staff report, and I'm looking through it as you're speaking, that maybe it wasn't called a waiver, but the applicant was not going to have to do undergrounding of utilities. Can you speak to that?
Sure. So that was actually requested as their one allowed incentive under density bonus law due to the cost savings associated with that improvement.
So they, it's not a waiver per the density bonus, it's a different...
Incentive per density bonus.
It's an incentive, okay. So, okay, I'll leave it at that. I might come back to that. Any other Commissioners?
Was part of the density bonus or not?
It is not, it is part of...
Part of density bonus. Mm-hmm. So density bonus allows for both incentive concessions and waivers.
Got it.
Waivers are an unlimited amount they are allowed to do. It's related to physical constraints with the site that prevent them from building the project as proposed. And they're also granted one incentive or concession, which is basically a request to not comply with the certain standard due to the cost savings associated with it.
Commissioner Balma, go ahead.
I was on the same track as far as the density bonus and as far as the incentive to eliminate the undergrounding. The poles, or the power poles, are actually on the other side of the alley from this project, so all of the lines are just kind of crossing over the alley to this project. Does that mean that those lines, those overhead lines, will still be there? They're not going to underground just even the wires, or...
Right. So all of the overhead lines are not going to be undergrounded as part of this project.
Commissioner Balma, if I may expand on that. So the requested concession is from the undergrounding of those existing overhead utilities. However, the service lines are still required by the engineering design manual to be placed underground to service the project site, if that makes any sense.
That's good. So that means we won't have all the wires crossing the alley. They'll still go underground.
At least for this, for the project frontage along the alley.
Project, right.
Not the rest of the alley.
Right, just for that one project, yeah. Because I thought that was kind of something, and when I looked at it, it was like, that doesn't seem like it's that hard to do, but, okay, so that was that. And then the other thing is, I know that in the past, we've had, you know, developers that don't want to do it or can't do it for whatever reasons, and we always allow them to, and they always have an in-lief fee. You know, I know that in this case, they don't have to do any in-lief fee that would pay towards that in the future of other locations. Okay.
So no in-lief fee is required.
Okay, all right.
So back to, just within the footprint, they're going to have to put the utilities off the wire. Had that not been the case, they would have done the entire alley?
They would have, Chairman Rosales, the zoning ordinance requires that, projects that require a development plan to place, similar to, like if you were doing a subdivision, to place all existing overhead utilities underground when it's along your project frontage. And so they would have done just their segment, the two lot-wide underground along that alley frontage of those existing overhead utilities. Because density bonus affords them the ability to ask for a concession from that requirement based on cost savings that leads to production of affordable housing, they're entitled to make that request. We've had that, it's been a popular concession as of late with density bonus projects. Over the last couple of years, we've seen this request come in more often than not. It actually leads to quite a bit of cost savings for a project. My understanding, the typical cost of undergrounding overhead utilities is about $1,000 a lineal foot. So this is a 100-foot wide lot. That's quite a bit of cost savings that goes into this project.
Got it. Commissioner Malik?
Yeah, I had a question about the access in the alley. Not being that familiar with the zoning and the requirements there, the alley is approximately 21 feet wide with 17 cars entering that and no access on the street, and the on-street parking on Tremont being extremely impacted. There's literally no parking available on that street today without any additional vehicles in the neighborhood. Understanding that they have 17 parking spots, both covered and uncovered, for this project, is there any consideration that is taken to determine, is that access adequate in the alleyway? Because it increases the vehicle traffic in that alleyway that's already very crowded and difficult to maneuver in.
So Transportation did do a review of this project to make sure that the access is adequate according to their standards. One other thing to note is there was no waiver requested as a part of this parking. This is compliant with the city's zoning ordinance parking requirement.
In addition, Commissioner Malik, we'd add that the project is actually doing the neighborhood a service because it isn't providing any curb cuts along Tremont Street. That's a big factor that we look at when projects are proposed in the coastal zone. Are they going to be able, are they going to impact coastal access? On-street parking is considered part of coastal access, so this project's not doing anything to exacerbate the current situation by, as an example, by adding a curb cut along Tremont. As Delaney mentioned, there is, Transportation Engineering reviewed the access to this project and found it in compliance with all city regulations. In addition, as Delaney mentioned, it's providing the code-required parking. They're not taking advantage of any density bonus provisions to reduce the parking. They're providing the parking that the zoning ordinance requires a project like this to provide.
Yeah, I understand. I just, when you look at the impact in the neighborhood, the fact that that street is already significantly impacted, on average, let's just say, half of the people that move into that facility have two vehicles, because it's typically what you're going to see. You're going to see another 10 to 12 cars in the neighborhood on the street that's already impacted. I understand where we're at, just a point of fact and observation.
Thank you. Go ahead. Commissioner Simons.
Yeah, adding also the parking thing, I just had a question. So as we look at the zoning ordinance, it says you only need one space per apartment. Now, in your experience from the Planning Commission, is that adequate? Or are we finding units that are built like this having more vehicles that are showing up? I mean, is it really a no impact to Tremont Street? Or are we really, or is there really an impact based on what you've seen outside of whatever the zoning says, right?
So Commissioner Simons, there's no easy way to answer your question. We often, you know, if a project provides, as an example, 15% more parking space than that's required by the ordinance, we often hear, that's not enough parking. Typically, this is something that, you know, you may not like this answer, but that the market takes place. If I have two cars, I'm moving into a place that only has one parking space, maybe that's not the best place for me because I don't want to park my car on the street. So in this instance, this is what the zoning ordinance requires. The staff hasn't gotten any direction to increase the parking requirements from the decision-makers for projects in the coastal zone. You know, it kind of begs the question, is this project is in compliance with the zoning ordinance, but there's unfolding state law that is further and further reducing parking? So a project that complies with the local requirement is deemed to be adequate until we have evidence of otherwise, until we get direction to analyze, you know, parking situations and perhaps amend our parking ordinances.
Yeah, you bring up a good point about, you know, legislation coming down from the state or other agencies trying to force people to have less cars, like, you know, just de-incentivize cars. So we'll probably see more stress put onto the street parking, or, you know, there's going to be a period of time where there's stress on the street parking when people still have the cars. You don't know whether that legislation is going to have the desired effect or not. It's just something we have to work through.
Certainly, Commissioner Simons, it certainly does take a number of years to see what the impacts of unfolding legislation has on local communities.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Back to you, Commissioner Malik.
Thanks. I guess that said, is there anything that we can do at this level within the city to look at a traffic study or other studies in that area to look at the impact of the traffic and the parking? Understanding what the zoning says, understanding where the state is headed, but in other words, how do we better manage the impact to the community, which is significant? I live in that community, I can tell you, it's very significant. And then, when you've got street sweeping, you've got people parked on both sides of the street, everywhere in that neighborhood, and it goes early in the morning, and it's an interesting event to witness, very challenging for a lot of people that live there. And as we increase the density in this area, it will do nothing but further exacerbate those challenges. So I would ask, is there anything that we can do to perhaps study that, to provide some additional understanding of the impact to both the city planner, Planning Commission, city council, et cetera, so that we're better informed of really what the true impact may be? Because I get where the regulations are, but the reality when you're living on the ground is much different. Thank you.
Commissioner Malik, Planning Commissioners, it's a tough question to answer at this level. I suppose one option that's available to the Planning Commission is to make a recommendation to city council that staff analyze parking, as an example, in the South Oceanside neighborhood. That would be a means of a direction that the Planning Commission could make a recommendation to city council, and city council provide that direction to staff to undergo that effort. I can tell you that when I first started here in 2015, staff had that exact same direction, and we took an item all the way to the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, to the city council level with recommendations to amend the city's parking ordinance for the coastal zone, and that item was put on a shelf and not, it hasn't been revisited since that time. I could give you a little more detail on that. I could provide that information to the Planning Commission on what was studied and what was analyzed back in 2015, 2016. My colleague Russ Cunningham spearheaded that effort. But we did get to the city council level, and at that time, the city council that was sitting at the dais decided not to take any action on those efforts.
If I could continue with a thought, which I think is a really good idea, is, I mean, there are, for traffic planning, there are levels of services on larger arterial roads and within the city. I imagine Tremont Street is not one of those roads that would be typically looked at. Again, we're talking about something different, we're talking about parking. So kind of a level of service for parking in the coastal zone. If this was last looked at in 2015, things have changed a lot with the state laws. So we're going to continue to see high-density development in what I'd call sort of atypical communities. And so I would support Commissioner Malik, you know, the idea of, and maybe we could do this separately as a motion, not related to this project, but separately, a direction to staff to take a look at revisiting that 2015 effort.
Chair Rosales, I'd have to defer to the city attorney, but I believe to give that direction, maybe during Planning Commission, there are comments, you provide us to put, place something on the agenda for, as an example, the next meeting, we could certainly bring back some information, and at that point, maybe we can do, I don't know, it would be in the form of a resolution perhaps, or something that asks, recommends to city council that we reanalyze the parking situation and perhaps the coastal zone as an example.
Yeah, not part of this project, but separately as a discussion item and direction during the comment period.
Certainly.
Again, go ahead. Commissioner Malik?
Different topic, different question. When you look at renderings for any of the projects that are submitted to the Planning Commission and ultimately to the council, if that's where they have to go, the renderings are kind of blue sky, because you've got a facility that's being built with no real concept of what the impact is to the surrounding structures. When you look at the renderings for this project, it looks as if it's got essentially an ocean view beyond it. That is not at all the case. It's a densely populated neighborhood, and the impact of a three-story structure sitting in an existing residential neighborhood really is not felt when you look at those renderings. So I'm just curious, is there, is there any way that that can be looked at as being able to visually understand what the impact would be?
Commissioner Malik, so the zoning allows three-story structures. This building is compliant with the existing zoning regulations. The city doesn't have, like, as an example, a view preservation ordinance or anything of that nature, so we don't really go that extra step as some communities do. Some communities require, as an example, story poles, lines of site studies, and those kinds of things. We don't have those types of requirements within our regulatory framework. Again, that would be something, if that wanted, those types of analysis wanted to be done on a case-by-case, project-by-project basis. We certainly would have to update our regulatory framework to require those types of analysis moving forward. One of the, one thing that those things do is really kind of slow entitlement review down because there's a little more back and forth. But that's not something that's easily achieved by just asking us to do that. It'd have to be in the form of updating our zoning ordinance to have those requirements built in as part of the design review process.
Commissioner Simons.
Yeah, how long, has it always been three stories? Or was that at some point, you know, in the recent past, did that get updated, not having been on the commission here for that long?
Sure. Commissioner Simons, to answer your question, so the existing regulations applicable in this part of the community, generally within the coastal zone, have been adopted since 1986. So they've been in place for the better part of 40 years.
So it's only recently that, you know, developers are starting to take advantage? No, that's not true. There's a lot of three-story buildings in the coastal zone, in that area. Yeah.
There certainly are a lot of three-story buildings in the coastal zone. What we're seeing is the redevelopment of a lot of existing sites. This is a prime example of that. Most likely, the owner of this building thought, perhaps, I'm at the useful end of this structure. I'm not sure what dates the structure, what, how old, the vintage of the existing structures on-site, but presumably, they've reached an age where they require more maintenance than they're worth in the marketplace. Perhaps in the marketplace, they're worth more just for the land to sell to someone to build more units.
Okay, thanks.
So, but the, to, not only has the building height been in place, but also the zoning that allows basically one unit per 1,000 square feet of lot area has been in place since 1986.
Yeah, so we haven't had a change in how the zoning is done. This is just another development that's taking advantage of the existing zoning laws that have been there for, or ordinances that have been there forever.
Yeah. The only difference is now we're seeing the layering of density bonus on top of that. So as an example, this project's realizing three additional units that wouldn't necessarily be allowed under the zoning of the site. So the density bonus is, while it's an older law, it's been around since the late '70s, recent revisions have made it more attractive for the development community to utilize.
Okay, great, thanks.
Delaney, thank you. I think we're done for the moment. You said there was, the applicant had a presentation or was at least present?
He's present.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Dodds?
My first question is more in curiosity.
Commissioner Dodds, can you check your mic? Are you on? Yeah, thanks.
My first question is more curiosity. They have the 17 units and a parking space for each unit. Eight are covered, nine are uncovered. Why did they choose to use that waiver for nine uncovered parking spaces?
So they go into detail in their description justification letter, but basically, the idea was to maintain safe access from the alley into the parking. If they had extended the structure to cover all those parking, it would create unsafe scythe distances, and it would also be more bulky and imposing on the alley.
Okay, that makes sense. Second question is, are there going to be provisions for charging stations for electronic vehicles?
Right. So with California Building Code and with their zoning ordinance in section 3030, in Article 30 of the zoning ordinance, they are required to have a number of EV parking spaces and a number of EV chargers, which they have incorporated.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the applicant is present, doesn't have a presentation. If the applicant raises their hand, would he like to come forward? Does the Commissioner, any Commissioners have a question for the applicant? I don't see anybody teeing up, so you can probably stay where you are. You do have the reserve, the right to come back a little bit later if we, if you hear something in our discussion that you'd like to respond to. It is a public hearing, so the public is welcome to provide comment, feedback. Do we have any slips to speak to this evening?
Chairman Rosales, we do not have any slips this evening on this item.
Thank you. We don't have any slips submitted, but that doesn't mean you can't come forward. I see a few folks in the audience. You're welcome to come forward before we close out the public hearing. All right, seeing nobody coming forward, then we'll bring it back to this body for continued discussion or questions or a motion. I'll leave it to you, so. Anybody? I guess maybe I'll start with a question for the city planner. Given that this is an older neighborhood, this sort of development or redevelopment could continue kind of down the street, right? If somebody owns a property, same premise, 1,000 square foot, they could use that, each 1,000 square foot for a unit, and if they combined some, they could, this duplication could happen all the way down Tremont Street and change the character of that neighborhood. All allowable, but...
Chairman Rosales, yes. We've seen it happen, as an example, on Cleveland Street. A lot of those properties were either underutilized, or perhaps vacant, or they were vestiges of when that area was more industrial by nature. And over time, we've seen a transformation of Cleveland Street to a multifamily kind of row of homes down there. So this is, some would say, the natural progression of redevelopment when buildings reach a certain age. So it's, it potentially could happen here too, yes.
Okay, great.
Kind of like when you have industrial, so an area that is in a residential area, again, it's a natural progression. It's just, it's very impactful.
Yeah, it is. I mean, we're seeing that kind of all over the city with, yeah. All right, I'll look for a motion from anybody who wants to make a motion. Commissioner Balma, go ahead.
This is definitely, when you, when you drive the neighborhood, it was definitely a shocker, because everything there was all single-family. There was only a few three-stories. It was kind of different. But as you were saying, how the parking, it was definitely impacted on Tremont Street when I drove through there. And as we now have a lot more people doing ADUs, taking away their garages now and making it even more units, it's going to get even more impacted. At least this project did give one parking place, which is what code is, to each unit. The units are, I think, of a size that could just be one person living in some of these. They're like 400, 500 square feet, and it's kind of a size of your first starter, kind of a place to live. And so I kind of, and I kind of appreciate the design. I wish the people that did the Breeze High Density Housing would have looked at this architect a little bit more to maybe come up with something that might have looked a little nicer. Like, this is actually not a bad-looking design. And they've done a good job with the landscaping, and I kind of like the feel of it. I just, I understand the neighborhood, though, because this is the first one, and it's just such a shock. But it's going to be like Cleveland Street. It'll be the first one. It just started snowballing on that street when they started doing those row houses. That was a shock for the very first one there, too. And I was around when those were going on, and now here, now... And I was around when those were going on, and now here, now it's all that. So little by little, and it's going to probably slowly but surely kind of go into more of this. So with that, I would support the applicant and make a motion that we consider a development plan, D-200110, regular coastal permit, RC-220008, and request for density bonus, DB-220006, to allow demolition of the two single-family homes and the one triplex for the construction of a three-story apartment complex consisting of 16 market-rate units and one very low affordable unit.
Thank you. So we have a motion for approval by Commissioner Obama.
I said the wrong thing.
Looking for.
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Custer. I'll echo what you said, Commissioner Obama, the parking. I'm glad, at least, given that the parking in that area is atrocious, that they didn't seek a concession to limit the parking, at least they went that far. And I, you know, like I previously said in my comment, I think we may see a trend in this neighborhood where more of this will happen, but it certainly is going to be impactful. But hopefully, it's a positive impact to the neighborhood ultimately. So let's go ahead and vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes 6-1 with Commissioner Malick voting no.
Thank you. Then we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is appeal of city planners' determination. We don't have anything agendized and nothing under discussion items. Would it be appropriate for me to bring up what we spoke about a minute ago on the parking study on this, under this item? Probably not, because we don't have anything agendized, more so in the comment section.
Seemingly, I think, Commissioner, or Chair Rizales, that maybe it would happen under the commissioners' report.
Okay. Well, let's go to city planner commission report. And Commissioner Malick, since you teed up that conversation, I'll go to you first, and then we'll come to the rest of commissioners for their reports. Why don't you lead with that?
I would request that we put a motion forward to request a traffic study of the parking in that coastal area in South Oceanside.
Would you like that? And if the motion is appropriate, or we can do it some other way, tell us that. But would you, how would you like to limit that, or do you want to limit it? How broad, or maybe I'll defer to you. When that study was done in 2015, how broad was that study?
Chairman Rizales, if my recollection is accurate, I believe it covered the entire coastal zone, maybe exclusive of the downtown. It'd have to, it's been a long time, and I didn't work on it. I would ask, if this is the desire of the planning commission, it might take us a little bit of time to kind of put those resources back together and refresh ourselves. If not the next meeting, perhaps the meeting after that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I imagine so. So if you're good with that, Commissioner Malick.
I would say that, but my other suggestion might be that we take a stepped approach to that and maybe work south to north in the coastal zone and in manageable chunks, if it makes more sense from a resource allocation perspective. So if you bring forward some ideas that maybe allows us to eat that elephant one bite at a time and understand where those impacts may be, you know, in groups, the coastal zone's, it's a sizable area.
Yeah.
If I may recommend, perhaps the next time we discuss this item, and I think we might be able to do it on the 27th, so I don't want to overextend ourselves, but maybe we, our starting point might be, what did we do? Look at what we did back in 2015.
There you go.
As a starting point, and see what the recommendations and conclusions were of those analysis, and perhaps allow the planning commission to chew on that for a little bit, and then maybe give some direction based on what we did back then. Is it applicable now? Are we talking apples and oranges? Maybe that's a good place to start the discussion.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. Can we get something ahead of the meeting so that we're, you know, that we can review staff report or with the study that was done?
Yeah, certainly. I think that, Chairman Rizales, I think that might be the appropriate place to start is to maybe draft a cover memo and say, hey, this is the work that was done previously to address the same issue. And let that be a point that everyone gets the opportunity to digest that information, and maybe we could have a discussion about that and how the planning commission thinks we might proceed forward with further analysis, and then maybe ultimately a recommendation to city council.
Great. So if that works for you, Commissioner Malick, then we'll, yeah, we'll hold a motion until we've seen that, and then, great.
And I'll let the, I'll prize the planning commission if it's feasible or not, but we can certainly place something on our discussion item where we provide that background information. If it's not at the next meeting, certainly maybe the meeting after that.
Okay, terrific.
And if it's not too much trouble, maybe the existing ordinances for parking.
Absolutely.
This is like a primer on, like, hey, these are the rules as they exist now, and then this is a study that was done, and then we can have the discussion.
Other factors to consider are, you know, reductions available through various pieces of legislation that have been passed since that time. You know, density bonus comes to mind. I don't recall the name of the legislation. I might get this wrong. I think it's AB 2097, which actually eliminates any parking requirement for any new development. The caveat is, you got to be within a half mile of a major transit stop. So for this far south, that probably won't have that much effect, but further north we go, it would certainly, it could impact tremendously.
We need to define major transit stop, first of all, so we understand what that truly means.
Yeah, there's a state definition of that.
I'm sure there is, it's just can be.
Yeah, whatever you want to put in a package to us so that we get educated and we kind of know, we can have a really good discussion, that'd be helpful.
Certainly.
Great. Then we'll go to the rest of the reports. And we can come back to Commissioner Malick if you have anything else, but I'll start off with a couple of items. So if many of you read maybe the newspaper, the old-school way of doing things, or saw a news report, you've seen that Brother Benno's has been in the news lately, not in such a good way. And Louise and I and the city planner have received a number of emails. Let me give you a little bit of background. Brother Benno's has a conditional use permit to operate where they operate. And back in, I'll say, 2018 or so, they came back to this body to seek another conditional use permit extension. So we put together an ad hoc group. I was on it, Louise was on it.
Kyle was.
Kyle was on it. And we wrestled with the idea of the conditional use permit extension over, I think COVID hit at that point, so maybe it was in 2020. It took us about a year and a half to walk through it. Ultimately, we agreed to it with certain new conditions, and the big takeaway was, hey, we'll see how it goes. And at some point, if it's not going well, and the PD, Oceanside PD's been involved with this all along, we'll get that information back and we'll revisit the issue. Well, the emails and the media coverage lately has been that things aren't going so well. Initially, things were going great for the first year, not so well now. So, long story short, Sergio let us know, city planner let us know that OPD is involved again to try to build kind of the picture of what's going on and bring that information back to the city manager, to the city planner, the council, and then ultimately this body. When we get that information, we will decide as a group to reconvene the ad hoc group and then revisit the entire issue again, because they've been there for 30-something years, and they've had issues over those years and done well, too. But clearly, most lately, there's been an uptick, if you will, in how things are not going so well. Yeah, so there's a business, it's a big business park where they are and a lot of businesses, and it's loitering, it's sleeping in doorways of businesses, it's using the outdoors for public bathrooms, you know, so the common, the things that we had heard about and seen over all those years, and we wrestle with when we were looking at renewing the CUP, so very similar. And so if you, imagine if you're a business owner out there, and this is, you know, at your front door, it's cumbersome and irritating, to say the least. So, so again, we're going to wait for that data to come to us and decide at that point whether or not to revisit the issue. And I guess the ultimate step we could take would be to tackle the CUP again and revisit whether or not it should continue. But we're not there yet. We're going to wait until that data comes our way. So Sergio, go ahead.
Certainly, Chair members, Austin, members of the planning commission, to give you a brief update to kind of piggyback on what the chairman brought up. So as he mentioned, we've, you know, over the last month and a half or so, staff has been receiving a number of complaints from property managers and some business owners regarding the situation in and around the industrial park there. About, let's see, just a little less than a month ago, the police department met with representatives from Brother Benno's, and they agreed upon some modest changes that hopefully have an effect. In addition, staff, city management met with Brother Benno's representatives, including the police department, to kind of further explore the situation, what's going on. Because as this body may recall, a little less than a year ago, there was a report here, was it a year, a year report from when the conditional use permit was modified to add some additional conditions of approval? And what we heard in May of 2022 was things were going well. The police department stood right there and said, Brother Benno's is being a great steward of their facility, and we have a reduction in calls for service, and they're implementing all the things they agreed to as part of the revised conditional use permit. A couple of things occurred since that time that really wasn't, did put the factors together when we met with them. Some of the things that may have exacerbated the situation over the last several months is the closing of the Bread of Life facility. So they have an increase in patronage to the site. You know, there's a concerted effort from the city to reduce the impacts of homelessness in the downtown through the gatekeepers program, not only here, but in the harbor. That may also be funneling some more folks over there. One thing that we didn't consider was a lot of the problematic folks, the folks that the Brother Benno staff deals with and folks that the PD deal with, aren't really patrons or clients of Brother Benno's. They're folks that either don't get services there, or they've been refused services there for poor behavior, but they can't make them move and go away. So at that meeting that we held last week, police department and Brother Benno staff agreed to give it a 30-day trial on these proposed revisions. And I could tell you what some of these changes were. Some of the changes they agreed to was they hired a second in-house security slash sanitation person that will be on-site and on the premises and cleaning up until about 7:00 PM. They've also agreed to reduce the, or limit the time in which they actually hand out what they call sack lunches and toiletries, hygiene kits. It used to be 11:00, now they're going to do that 10:45. And really to cut those services off, any meal services, any other services, no later than 11 o'clock, and only take by appointment services from then until they close for the day. And so the hope is that with these changes, these modest changes implemented, and maybe a little heightened security on Brother Benno's part, heightened awareness, additional personnel, that the situation will remedy itself. It's yet to be seen yet.
Yeah.
Are probably not down there, maybe looking for other forms of shelter, so it's not a great situation.
Yeah, and that's what we wrestle with. It is a very challenging issue, and there isn't like a black and white answer to things. So that being said, if there are conditions that a CUP issued, those need to be followed. And so.
I have a question along those lines. When will the navigation center open? And do you think that'll help relieve some of this?
Commissioner Custer, I'm not sure of the timeline for the navigation center to open. I know they're actively working on that, on that project. It's under construction to get it open. Presumably, one would think if there's more available services available in other parts of town, that that would hopefully relieve some of the pressure that's on Brother Benno's. The navigation center is a full-service center, where each even has overnight accommodations. And so it's yet to be seen, but one would hope that with the opening of the navigation center, that some of the pressures that Brother Benno's has been experiencing may be relieved.
Do you think it'll be another year or so, or is it going fairly quickly?
I think it's going fairly quick. I wish, I don't, I just, I'm not involved with that project, so I don't know what the timeline is, what the expected opening date is. We certainly can find out and bring that back to you.
Okay.
The other item that I wanted to note was that I saw in the media a story about the city of Huntington Beach getting sued by the state the second time around for, I think this time it was not following and adhering to the ADU, state law, ADU compliance, and they were sued separately on, you know, essentially the housing, the new housing laws. And I, just an interesting issue to me, because I, you know, we've been wrestling with, more recently with the Ocean Breeze issue and the conundrum that not only Oceanside, but others are in to not have the discretion anymore for a lot of the housing requirements that are now in facing us. So I, when I read the article, I was wondering, will others follow suit as Huntington Beach and start pressing the state and so forth? So just a comment, just a note on my part that I saw that, and I found that to be interesting. I'll kick it over to Vice Chair Morrison. Anything to report out?
No report.
Thank you. Commissioner Obama.
I was going to, thank you for bringing that up so eloquently on the Brother Benno's. The only other comment I was going to make to add to that was that, you know, Brother Benno's, like you said, it's the clients, their clients are not the really the ones that are causing all these problems in the park. They're the ones that don't really comply with any of the rules, and that's just what they do. But I was just wondering if, and I don't know why we didn't go further with this, I think we talked to Tila a little bit about it, like, why the city of Oceanside or why the business park doesn't just disallow camping overnight and camping, just camping in a tent or whatever in that business park? I think it was, Tila was saying, well, this could, it might just push it into the residential community, which is not really solving anything, but I think in the residential community, those people aren't going to, they probably won't put up with it. But the thing is, is like, maybe there's a way that these business owners, because this is kind of a change of the guard in that park, that a lot of, the older property owner has sold out most of the property, and now this new guy's coming, these new people have come in, and they're just kind of like, like, why is this happening? And that's why they're doing the petition, and they're doing all this stuff now to try to get rid of Brother Benno's CUP. But Brother Benno's is doing a really good job for a lot of people. It's like, that's not the real issue. It's these other people that are crashing into this world. So if there's a way to push on those people by not allowing them to camp and not allowing them to do these things, if the city can help out with some of that, and the business park wants to do that, that might help them a little bit more. I don't know. That's something we can talk about.
Yeah, definitely.
But there's nothing else for me to report other than that.
Thanks for those comments. Commissioner Custer.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Simons?
Nothing to report.
Dodds?
Nothing to report.
And I'll let you wrap it up, Commissioner Malick? Nothing? Okay. City planner?
Thank you, Chair Rizales and members of the planning commission. So upcoming planning commission items, at the next meeting, there will be a regulated use, conditional use permit for a smoke shop on Oceanside Boulevard. It's an interesting situation. This business has been open for the better part of 15 years, but I think what's happened over time is that their display area for drug paraphernalia has grown, and so now they require to have a regulated use permit. And so they will be coming to, before this body for a recommendation to city council on that action. There will also be a project located at 1743 Tremont Street. It's, the site has developed an existing home, and the applicant is proposing four condominium units there. And finally, we're going to be, bring the planning commission work plan for the upcoming fiscal year to this body for a recommendation to city council. The meeting on April 10th, we have an apartment project on Bush Street that's currently a vacant lot, and the applicant's proposing to build three units there. There's also a Madera Melrose project, which is a mixed-use project located at the southeast corner of Bobier Drive and Melrose Drive. It entails 323 apartment units and about 2,500 square feet of retail space of this 323 apartment units. Thirty-three are intended to be reserved for households within the very low-income category. And finally, at that meeting, we will bring forward to this body the OBC project at El Corazon, which entails three R&amp;D buildings and then a traditional shopping center comprised of four drive-throughs, a gas station, convenience store, and an inline retail shop. And then on the meeting of April 24th, there is a proposed Popeyes drive-through at the southern end of town. It'll be coming towards this body.
What is?
April 24th. It's off of Lake. It's off of Lake down there in a very southeast corner of the city. There's a commercial center there. They have one existing, one remaining pad to be built out, and this is the last remaining pad in that shopping center. Moving on to city council, upcoming on the meeting of March 22nd, a project that this body heard, everything wine and spirits will be moving forward with a regulated conditional use permit. The meeting of April 5th, we will be taking forward the annual progress report to HCD. It's the report we fill out every year that reports to Department of Housing and Community Development, cities' progress on housing production towards meeting our arena obligations. And then finally, on April 19th, the city council will be considering a project here in the downtown at 901 Pierview Way. It entails 64 condominium units and some dedicated retail space. It's another density bonus project. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there a project, is it Motel 6, or is there like one where you get off the Coast Highway right there? Is there, I've heard, I thought I read something about something there, big.
Commissioner Bauma, it's members of the planning commission. So yeah, yesterday in the San Diego Union Tribune, there was an article on the application that we're currently reviewing. It's for the redevelopment of the Motel 6 site. The same group that's proposing the Madera Melrose project is proposing one of the Madera brand projects there. It's known as Madera Neptune. It entails 360 apartment units and 62 hotel rooms.
That's huge, huh?
Wow.
Talk about impact on traffic. How's Ocean Camp coming along?
That's a good question. Commissioner Bauma, I know they're currently working on revising their grading permit, but I believe there's also been some litigation filed against the project, so that's to be determined still.
I know North River Farms is actually breaking ground, like, I think in the next week or so, with their project. They're going, they've got their grading permit, and they're moving forward, so.
Lots going on.
Yeah.
All right, unless there's anything else.
And then I have avocados. So I have a few bags here, so please take any avocados you'd like. I brought them for you guys, and so I don't really want to take them home. And they're windfall. Like, we used to be able to sell those, because they're perfectly good, but the rules changed, and I think it was Department of something, I mean, somebody back east that doesn't know anything, that has now changed the law, and now we can't sell them anymore. So now I've been giving them away to everybody I could think of. So I brought some for you guys.
All right, let the record show that Commissioner Bauma is donating us some avocados.
Yeah.
With that, we're adjourned.
Get us through to the next meeting.
Yeah, they fall off the tree, they're windfall.